That's the third. We don't have to change that.
That was, she's in a meeting. I already tried.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
See, I like to have more information than just this in front of us. I tried to read it and it's legally conversation and I wasn't here if, when the first time this came through. This one is signed July 2nd of this year. This is the first time hearing. It wasn't awarded yet, but. And I guess one of my issues is, you know, county commissioner, that signature line. This is where we get into this, where, I don't know where we're at. Because, Mr. Chairman, my issue is you've got a line item, if, we don't know what the parameters are, we're only basing it on a budget line item. So also with this line item and money starts coming out of it, is our person who's taking the retirement, taking it out of that line item? I don't think so. She has a line item retirement.
Yes, and then when I get the money in, then I do the adjustments that she gives me and I adjust from all the accounts that it's supposed to come from. And that other, the match account, in case you guys wanted to know, is in the 60213 is the very last one in the attorney account.
So maybe it would be beneficial to get Kara or Bailey. That would be.
Okay, yeah, I can absolutely do that.
It's confusing. And Bailey and Bailey's the chief.
She's the regional program manager over me and then Megan Hughes is the deputy.
The deputy attorney general.
Attorney general.
So maybe one of those guys will have time in a couple of weeks to explain it and how it works.
Yeah, they were going to come on the phone, but they have a meeting this morning and they're not done with, so.
Yeah.
If that's.
Deputy chair.
Yeah.
Or two.
Yeah.
Let's add it to the next agenda and hopefully they can manage something.
Okay, okay, that's what I'll do.
I'm not going to, my ear's bleeding because I'm confused.
I think we're all very confused.
I think we're terrible.
It might be better if they just come on there and explain it because they are the experts.
Yes, they are. And they offered it to us, so that'd be good if they, okay.
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 Thank you, Nancy. Sorry for.
Yep, we'll just have them address it all at once. Thank you.
I'll put this in here. You're okay from keeping that?
Yeah.
All right, Jim, see you around.
Yep.
Rudy's got good news for us.
We have the bridge.
Hold on.
Oh, yep.
Yeah.
What?
It's about half a mile from the one we've been working on. It's one of the, so it's, you know.
Okay.
It's bad and it's not, you know, we have to.
Could you just shove some dirt up there if you don't see it?
Well, I know, I'm afraid we might have to. Might get close traffic now too.
I think it's like the dirt wrap thing up for dirt, you know? What does this one actually have?
Three numbers. You might be doing a little bit about it today and talking about potentially maybe a bypass kind of deal for temporary, right?
Yeah, I think the line would be agreeable, but I was planning to take it out next year anyway and already with him, he was so real about that, he seemed to be agreeable for that. We thought, in a sense, we sent some easements through there, which probably isn't going to be enough to put bypass in.
We were discussing about maybe getting the water.
Yeah, I did contact their bearing associates, just knew about the hydrology stadium on it, make sure you get the pipe size correctly. What worries me is by the time they get in with that, making a order to pipe, we want to take time on the pipe before they have time to get out of there, so you never know when it's set in, no country. Obviously, we've got to replace it anyway. I don't think it's, it doesn't make sense to rebuild the bridge. I don't say it could, and the cattle got a portion of it is moved. There's no fence to it, so that serves no purpose anymore, so.
Do you need a, I guess, guy in terminal four on four with that?
I have some thoughts on that.
Completely okay with going to Covert's if it's okay with the hydrology study, I guess, and it's not even cheap either.
It's okay with N O T, you know, if it doesn't fall under the bridge requirement, you can do that. I'm all for it.
And I did have Marty called again and asked him about some pipe prospects and I thought I could have it by this morning, but I didn't, I mean, I would assume I probably looked at at least $30,000 of pipe, I guess. For sure, I recommend, but I'm all for it.
We burnt through most of our, what was it, which fund is it? County Road Fund, we burnt through most of it, so. We're designating some of that gravel to the other gravel account. Right. For these road projects, these are the ones.
You know, we can do the work on it, that's no problem.
They having any idea when the hydrology is starting to be done?
I thought he was going to call me today, love you, love you. I'm supposed to be, I don't have any idea how we're going to do that. I don't think it takes long, really. Just need to find somebody to take care of that thing. But worse comes to worse, we can, you know, without a motherfucker down there, if we get some gravel, gets in the J base, packed in there, double that off, you know, we'd be fine if only we didn't have a ground rusher. At least get traffic across, keep an eye on it.
So you could have a low water crossing. A low water crossing?
Well, my thoughts were, you know, just fill that void in with J base, you get that packed in there as soon as we can, and then bottom, say, you know, if we got a good rain there, the bus ship will back out, we'd have to keep an eye on it. I think that would work. You know, definitely through the winter to keep traffic across, so I don't think a pipe pass is reliable.
I guess I'd be comfortable, you just, you know, do what you can do with it and then just keep us apprised on when you get the study done, what it's going to take to get it fixed right then, just use your judgment.
I think it was the right call to close it for now.
Yeah, I'm careful outside it, I tell her that on the side caution, something goes through our eyes. We did finish with trucks on the bridge, but we'll get turned off. Get the finger out there and like, right? And we get some patch material, we have guys, some smaller holes out on the heavy bar, and that'll, I don't know.
It's okay. I did hear a comment, a good comment.
What's that?
I did hear a good comment, so, and it was thank you.
Fifty sacks of that coal, that's worth $10,000 compared to $2,000 per load household. I hope that makes a little more sense. Should have been gravel in the barn without this way.
Is it going to be able to get her mag this fall, you think?
Yeah. Marty was going to get a whole shed bus busker since he's looking for a party in the month. And they'll get it done for sure.
Yeah. All right, question to you, Jim. Pretty exciting.
Go enjoy vacation. Go enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, I'll let you know when we adjourn for lunch and then I'll be in power.
Thank you, Jim. I've looked at these, is it five years, with the enforcement jail medical inmate programs?
If I look at the top, I don't tell you, like, 2019, on the first two pages, the next two pages are 2020. And then 2021, 2022. And then the amount, spend, and then the bottom.
Sir, yes, ma'am, sorry.
Oh, my. If you start turning the heat up. The rings are freezing.
Sorry.
It's fine, I don't care. I'm curious, if we get a collection from an insurance company, does it all go back in here, in this camp?
They're not augmenting.
If it were to?
I'd assume.
So, do we even try?
Not that I'm aware of.
Marty, I mean, blood for return. I think, I mean, I think we would end up spending more money doing it than what we get in return, but that's just my personal opinion. Nobody in the state does it. I haven't heard back from our insurance as to what they can and will allow us to do on that, so.
It's going to take a lot more than a five-person economic development board or the seven-person city council or the five-person county commissioners or, or even the hospital board. The, the public at this point really needs to have a stake in the game and needs to come forward and to have some honest discussions and some ideas and, and even more than just the community, I'd say the younger people, those younger people in their twenties that are in Newcastle and Weston County raising their kids, those people that don't want to leave, those people that want their kids to grow up in Newcastle and graduate an NHS doggy just like they did, those are the people that are going to have to step up and come forward and, and offer some solutions and do a little bit of soul searching and becoming a more active member in the community.
So now it's basically just going to call some different doctors that do tele and get price quotes, I guess, for like a bit of germs for you guys, if that's, if that's what you'd like to say. But as of right now, nobody in the state, as far as facility wise, does telehealth. They do for mental health, but not for medical. They have, they either, the smaller places do like we do and just take them to the doctor or the other facilities are big enough that they have on-call two, three times a week doctors that come in, so they have calls.
Goodness gracious, it's united. Mr. Chairman, I'm not getting on my phone, please, any moment, as a key theater, if you don't mind.
So you're sending me on a law enforcement program, you get one year from 780 to the following year of 6300 to the following year of 965.
All right.
I know, but the other one I can see, it's kind of.
Yes. See, Mr. Chairman, see, in our Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have telehealth. Because you're giving it on the market price. There's also N D live.
That's 30 minutes.
Now, why don't we telehealth now, here? Which is Blue Cross Blue Shield?
These are all.
You see, for like your mental health, that doctor that they talk to is the doctor, so you're not, they're not seeing the counselor and then the counselor.
Refer.
Yeah, so, if he kind of wants to be able to telehealth is, essentially, if you have just a, let's say a nurse, she's going to have to have a doctor also prescribe, so we pay up two people for them to see one person, or can we have like mental health, just have a doctor do it and just cut out the middle? I don't know yet.
Well, hopefully you can get tele, because our telehealth is the doctor and they prescribe. Sorry. But that's because I'm their patient, because I have their insurance, so I don't know how that works. Because inmates aren't there, aren't on our insurance.
Oh, you're still, oh, I don't know. But there still should be one out there. That necessarily, that you would have just a subscription fee or a online fee, you know, like, you go to do a record research or something, you have to pay that one $495 or something. I mean, I don't necessarily want to hit this button and sign up.
You don't want all the spam emails?
Although I, I don't mind the, I don't like the emails. I don't mind telephone calls, I have a lot of fun with them. Probably, I'll probably go to health, but that's okay, because it's fun.
I'm wondering, because like the prison has a contract company that comes in and does theirs, where, since they're already coming here to do the prison, maybe it'd be worth looking into what they charge.
See if they can do it.
Yeah, like they can come in two mornings a week or something and pour colds and flu and, I don't know. If, their, their hourly rate may be so targeted that we're like, forget it, but since they're already in this area, this, to me, is a lot.
So here's one.
And they're, they're dealing with the same population, I'm sorry.
So, here's one, how much is a, is, if you were to walk into the clinic, how much does that cost?
$100,000.
Okay. Here's one that's $129, the telehealth. 24/7, on demand. Here it has, excepted assurances, if, insurances, if they would have the insurance. They accept Blue Cross Blue Shield, quite a few of them, Medicare, Humana, United Care. I think they're out there. I don't know.
The problem would be using a telehealth then, for, I mean, you pay, you have to pay right then. So, we use a credit card or.
How would that work?
Nobody seems to want to call the credit card policy that we have, no.
I can't sure I do.
Bless your heart, thank you. I mean, that would be something we could, we could put out there, but.
Can tell them how.
Did you do the math on that? I'm going to tell you what's here.
Where is it? Jail Medical? $7,000, $492, $37,000. They've already sent past that. Let's see.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I don't know.
Who was it?
I can't remember what it's been this one. I ran out.
The last meeting.
I thought it was, I thought you wrote on the top 2,000.
That, I think.
Seabuck's got a couple inmates right now that are just running a lot of bills.
Well, one, been fortunate enough that they, we've just been, just been applying it to his, his field. For, and as long as we've had him and not paying, I'm surprised they're staying. Well, I don't think so, but at some point, I'm sure they're going to want to.
Yeah. Goes through the court system, seems like it do. Getting out of here on the, where do they go, Senator, or it's just?
So, so there are, so there are cases, depending on their circumstances, we have had to ask Michael if we could do like a medical referral, they're out, they get whatever taken care of on their own and then either they report back or we just re-.
Yeah, it's just a conditional release. County's not paying for it, they're not responsible, they're taking care of their stuff. Once their stuff's done, they have to come back.
Yeah. We have done that on a small handful of accidents. Two things obviously for not getting, but some of your more serious injuries are that come in with injuries.
Our biggest problem probably is during the small community weekends. Because you can go to the clinic for not a whole lot more than maybe telehealth, but if you go to the emergency room for a sore throat, it's going to be $2,200.
Yep. Just for a sore throat.
I mean, it's just, you can't walk into the emergency room for less than that. We don't have urgent care. So, maybe if we could figure something out even on the weekend that we could do differently.
Well, and I know a lot of cases too, it's, well, we want x-rays, we want CT scans, it's like, hey, you know, I just came in for a headache, but whatever, or I'm not the doctor, but it always seems to go that well where they want, and I don't know if, by my talent, but I don't know if it's just because of where they're at that it's money for them or can we pay it? I don't know. I don't want to make that accusation.
The doctors.
I think a lot of times when we go in, in a situation like that, they do that anyway. I mean, you're walking in emergency room and they're, they're going to hit you for everything, you know? You're vulnerable for one thing, you're in a very, but, and I'm not going to put the blame on anybody if you're coming in and you want to know if you, you know, swallowed the bristle off of the grill, but, you know, but I'm of a persuasion on the weekend, at least, or even to that, I think even in telehealth, somebody could say, I don't think this is good, get out of here. You know, and that'd be work on there, $29, I was dating, hey, we covered it. You got a fever, 100, whatever, and here's your amoxicillin and thanks for stopping by and we'll send you a receipt. I think that'd be fine. I know it's a little more effort, I know it's a little more, but.
Okay, so they started out with 2,000 and right now they've already spent $4,527.95. And it's only been two months.
And the average is 7.
7,000, so the one year, they spent over 8,000. The last two years, it's been well over 10,000.
This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people because they really take care of you good and are very kind.
Twice a day, every day, activities, people have been organized activity. It's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo. We play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here. It's a good place to be.
So the one year, um, they spent over eight thousand. Um, the last two years, it's been well over ten thousand. Twenty twenty-three, it was twelve thousand one thirty-one. Last year it was thirteen thousand seven hundred and.
Thirteen, last year, right?
Yeah.
With several budget adjustments.
Kind of look at that line item as a. Make your shoe a little low, knowing that there's a chance that you are going to have to have a budget adjustment in the future. I mean. I think we probably shot considerably like way too low. And maybe we should have shot for eight or something instead of two. And when you do. Twenty twenty-two, we don't expect eight hundred dollars.
No, I'm going to have to look. There's no blame. I think that was a. One of the, one of the parts that I was, that just doesn't seem right.
Yeah, but like you said, every year you should have to deal with it.
Chris, you know, you mind reaching up, reaching out to the, I can't see what. Like, uh, maybe something we can piggyback with them on, probably got some of those costs. We gotta start thinking outside the box, way outside.
Mr. Truman.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think if we gave you the latitude to try one of those, to go and look at one of those telehealths and see what you're. First of all, I'd like one to fit in with our program, but if there's not one that doesn't fit, because the interesting of those people don't have health insurance. So we're after something that is just going to take care of somebody that doesn't have health insurance. Um, you may have to go out there and try one of those. You know, honestly, you need to do some research on it that it's not a. A farm job.
Live by night.
Right, um, you know, I got my PhD from the track of law, but. Or medical spending, where I have a PhD and not an M.D. I would like to give him the latitude to try that, see how it works. Um, some, on some of those interesting. Simple ones like a headache or whatever, see how it goes. If you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, and I could, I could get a few places and look back to you. Either the ones that we found and if you guys want to kind of do a little bit of research yourself to see. Make sure I'm not overlooking something. I could definitely do that.
It's great of you.
Cause I, I think it's a good idea for us to think outside of the box. I also think we're probably going to have to put money in. I'm, I'm not. I'm not disallowed to look back, but this is going to be a check set. It's probably against everyone in the world to say, I can't arrest you because you're sick.
That was the nice thing about COVID.
Yeah, that's great. How healthy.
And like I said, I, I, we do work with Michael on some of those cases where, you know, we like to say we try to do that, but. Like you said, most of them is Friday night, you know, like clockwork. Oh, now I feel, I feel sick. Well, I should have done that yesterday. Here we are.
You know, they find out, oh, they don't get a free trip to the hospital. They're going to get talked to by on the phone. It might cut some of the stuff out too.
Well, so the flip side of that coin is, um, when we started taking money out of their account. We've had, we've had a few that stopped getting money in and stopped taking their meds. And that left an issue where now they're not on their meds that they were. And that created. Other issues. So now it's, well. I just cannot not let you have your meds. So now we're back to paying for it to keep you on your meds. It, it's, it, medical is a tough thing in this type of a environment. Cause again, when they found out you're, you're taking their money, they, they sent it all out back home and. Stopped taking their meds and that created a, a medical nightmare. And it's a game. They know the medical hospital provide. To a certain extent.
How protected are you in a situation, I've got a headache. I mean.
You know, like, Eric and I were talking about last meeting, you know, I. For me, it's here, here's some ibuprofen, get with me tomorrow and see how you feel, but. But like I said, I had the lawyer say, I suppose it ain't yours. I don't know. I'm not a doctor. You know, I. That's, I, 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 I don't know. Generally, that's what we try to do is, hey, you know, toothache here, here's some ibuprofen, get with me tomorrow or something. See how it's going or here's some, you know, get some of the numbing stuff, trying to do this, you know, so. But when they, when they say, no, I want to see a doctor, okay, kind of said the magic word, so.
I think that'd be kind of cool. Write the line. There you go. Let's see a doctor.
Yeah, right.
It's your doctor.
And that might alleviate some of that fearless stuff. He's, oh crap.
I don't get out.
Yep.
Get to sit, stay where I am.
Yep.
And, and, no offense, but I think sometimes that's an aggravation too, too, you know?
Well, but it saves, I mean, but it also saves us finding somebody to come in, get them, go.
Well, that's what I mean. I think not to assume anything, but sometimes, you know, you put me in jail, I'll make it worth your time.
Oh, we, absolutely, we have those, one hundred percent.
Well, if you go try that, I think. But back to a virtual issue.
So you're two thousand behind now.
Correct. Two months and change.
Two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Three months into the cycle. What do we really want to put in?
Two thousand.
We dig around and find ten, because I'm guessing that's.
I mean, instead of doing this over and over again, go for two or three somewhere.
Me, I think Jason would come up with a solution. Maybe it will save a little bit.
And understand, Jason, that if he takes the fire extinguishers out of that line item, we'll be on the case.
Yikes.
Cause I don't think that's telehealth.
Get hit upside the head.
I think we might be going over. Well, here's to wiping out the financial administration.
Got that before?
Yes, we have. And here's to donating. And I love this.
Thank you.
I move, Mr. Truman. That we placed fifteen thousand dollars from the. One hundred point zero zero point zero, point zero zero nine nine zero 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 dot zero 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 zero. General mislabeled financial administration account into. Give me a number.
One hundred point zero zero point zero seven point zero one eight five, zero 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 one, zero 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 zero.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Second.
Got motion on the floor to hold fifteen thousand dollars out of financial admin account and put it into jail. General law enforcement jail medical account. Any discussion?
I will, since I iterated it, I am not going to reiterate. This one's a, one of the, so. Do your best. Come and help us with, with, like the telehealth or whatever. See what we can do to fix that.
Sorry. And I have to try a couple.
Exactly. That's what I was going to say.
Right.
Well, and thank you for that.
I just think that would be, I mean, you're going to stand there and understand whether, I think you'll know, I mean. Your spidey senses will be in high tune. To say, I think maybe we have something going on here. This is, they're, they're prescribing. You know, fourteen different essential oils and into dried herbs. So you're going to know. I don't, maybe it'll work.
Another discussion. Always a favorite motion on the floor. So you transfer fifteen thousand dollars. Please say aye.
Aye.
Totally.
And we'd love to see you, Jason. Don't look at us.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
And then like I said, oh, I'll do some of that and I'll, I'll get back with you guys with some of the, what I found. Definitely with the, the prison laws, I'll let you know what, what they sense.
You might run off real quick. They're, we're going to discuss.
Do that up there.
I see.
Third time.
Yeah.
It's been so long, Jason. How do we end?
Good, good, good man.
Anything left for now?
Now I got a headache. You wonder what I can do to get some to jail.
We did the general law enforcement inmate program.
You didn't do it?
We didn't discuss that. That's the one that you asked for the.
Oh, yes, I did. It, this is crazy. This is the inmate account.
Okay, that is the inmate account.
Okay, so we went through this dance of what this was and what it was supposed to be in. It was supposed to be left alone and, and commissioners took it away years ago.
Before, yes.
It's, exactly. So now it came back and it's been the same amount for how many years? At least four.
At least four or five.
The same amount, so. There's a misunderstanding on our part that this is money put in by the inmates because it's the exact same amount every year. And that's, I'm winning the lottery. And it's been the same amount for how many years? At least four.
At least four or five.
The same amount, so. There's a misunderstanding on our part that this is money put in by the inmates because it's the exact same amount every year. And that's, I'm winning the lottery.
Is that the three thousand or?
Thirty-four.
That's the inmate program.
Thirty-four.
Yep, that's the inmate program. Since I've been the administrator, I haven't pulled anything the, for inmate programs out of that. Um, the phone systems we use. With the price of, or with, with the deal that we have with that system, they do have programs that's. Added to their, to their tablets. So some, so AA, NA, that kind of stuff is, is part of. Part of the SINET program that we have. So I have not used any of that money to buy NA books, things like that. That's what that account is, is, is for inmate type program.
So let me gently put that one. Because when I was kidding about the Sundance extinguishers, Eric and Jason, and that, yeah. Why do you bind them to the extinguisher? Just curious.
Out of the.
Yeah, inmate account.
That I don't have.
Yeah, thank you.
So in nineteen, there was Fred Wilder too.
And there's a Fred Wilder.
I was preparing doors they tore off. And Uber computers.
Two Fred Wilder.
And I, Fred's, I know, yeah, I know we did have an inmate tear up some doors, but. I don't know what account those, that should have been, like, maybe that's. I would, I would think.
And then you have ones that are like, the listing character is net, and then it's paid back. What are we doing? Now, maybe it's all a squib. I mean, it could be, maybe there's something up there that nobody else has, I don't know. You've got lots of ranges. So, I mean, that's where we were with the range thing. We kind of understood the range and the RT and. And we kind of learned that sometimes Woody's, they want ramen noodles or they want. Who wants?
I love ramen.
Oh, that's my buddy, you won't. And I also understand that Black House Chemicals sometimes has the ramen noodles and they have the muffins and they have the. So I guess.
But most of that should be for prisoners.
See, that's why we're getting this weird feeling about what is this account, because the understanding that we had was it came from the inmates.
So that, that account has been there since I've been employed. So I, I couldn't tell you how that originated. I just, I just know, um. However, Dan explained it, you could definitely explain it better than me because I have no idea what.
I think the understanding with Dan was that it was inmates had money set aside that they could use to buy stuff.
But that's, that's, that's the, that's.
The checking account that you had.
Yes.
So that was our interesting thing about the checking account. So our interest is, what is this? Cause what it looks like is just another account that has money in it, money drawn out, and sometimes gets money put back in it. We just don't know why.
Yeah, like I said, my understanding is because that is the. Yeah, like I said, my understanding is, because that is the...
Yeah.
Used for that type of stuff. Educational whatnots.
But Harleys, Harleys, I would assume, Harleys T V?
Washing dryer? You just had to replace the washing dryer.
Two hundred and seventy-seven mil?
Oh, no.
If you got a dryer for...
With our top office, B.
It'd be opposite.
I don't think it's fair to put it all on him either, because I think this is maybe something we should bring in, Sheriff Cobard, or, and, yeah, who else to discuss this, maybe?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull this back there, nineteen, during doors, I mean, a hundred fifty dollars for an over.
Because I think this is, you haven't been involved with this long enough to really defend yourself.
Well, that could be always, deals worth of money that you're sort of doctoring through that.
I think we did ask the person and got the answer.
And I guess, too, the word inmate program is very vague. How, you know, what you make a program, I can articulate something different.
And I understand, I even understand the basis of what the court is supposed to be. I have no problem understanding if somebody wants AA books, or if they want new composition books so they can write their life story in there, make a visiting dollar. I got that. And if they want to have banana nut muffins instead of blueberry, okay. But that seems to me a commissary thing, and you earn your right to do that. So the interesting part is, is how it falls in here. So...
I guess it's gonna be the, what you're spending out of the...
Pay taxes or vouchers?
Yeah.
You guys could ask Jason to get an update from Summit twenty.
Summit, yes.
And a warranty on the AC unit. It is...
So essentially, what he sent was off of their webpage, that's the machine, and everything that's on there is the warranty that they gave. So that's how I took the attachment that he sent me, was basically their webpage with the machine and the warranty information.
Still working, I assume, the Band-Aids are right where they've been put on it?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. He's there again for our office board. He was there twice last week. He's running that warranty.
If you don't think this part is important, you can hear that.
That's very delicate.
All the time.
Thank you.
Well, that's better.
Coleman furnace has a thirty-two year heat exchange warranty. Twenty years on the American Standard. Ten years on parts for the Coleman. Looks like five years on parts for the American Standard. Ten years on the AC unit, maintenance unit, Coleman, on parts. Looks like about five years again. For the American Standard. I'm wrong. American Standard is twelve years. Ten, ten years for single-phase units, not twelve on the compressor for select units, or ten years for part. For American Standard, I'm gonna hit AC.
One was a single-phase, the other was multi?
No, single-stage.
That's a double.
Yeah.
Which would be identical with warranty for both of them on that.
Point to the first calls, we're on more than eight up or new, you know, costs, it's a bad part.
That's original furnace from nineteen eighty-three.
Got a good run out of it.
We got a good run.
How many units were in that building?
None. Goodness gracious. If it can't get sunburned, we're fucked.
Might be in our best interest to start planning on...
Yes.
One or two out of the year.
You'll be good, you'll be good. Nine of them, okay.
That doesn't look that big. Wow. Just doesn't look like it should be that big of a building.
They're all cubic, probably.
Wonder what putting in a ridge vent would do? Is that what helps? Cubic coal type, yeah. That's why.
You know, that might be something with some of the offices, replumbing some of that, tying them all, you know, bigger unit and doing something like that, too. You know, that's something we can probably look at doing as well. So I think for the offices, we're just for the different offices, so that might be an option as well.
Probably have an interim staff.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Unless you thought process, maybe, or not.
We'll let you go down and pick out your room.
Just sweet guy.
Then you get free medical.
What are you saying? What the hell?
But, yeah, for the future, that would be something we can look at. And, yeah, they could replace them, you know, those three or four that we have up there for, the single-baiters.
Maybe that whole, where the place used to be in the offices, or dispossessed, maybe that, well, maybe all that could be one.
That might, yeah, I think, square footage, I don't know, but one or two at least.
What would it take to go through there and have an evaluation of how many furnaces it would take? What would it take to do? I'm asking you, because you were in that.
Yes. My first opinion, building shouldn't ever been set up to what it was.
Well, we could go down that road.
Should have a master unit, but, you know, one big, like a big boiler or a big water chiller, and each unit had its own, area had its own thing.
But it didn't, so...
No, I mean, your best bet would probably be is try to consolidate, like you said, the offices, get them in off one area, you know, try to maybe tie one unit, you would have cut down maybe four or five units, tying some together.
So what is the process to do that?
You're, well, dealers to companies.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would request that we put out a request for proposal. For that very thing.
You're just gonna have to tie them up for together, aren't you?
And just find out what that's gonna take, because, Mr. Chairman, it's my opinion that if, if one's going down, it's like the washer and dryer in your house, and the refrigerator, right, or when you built your house, you bought them all at the same time, and guess what happened? Major catastrophe.
So is this like an H R, what we did in the basement, okay?
Yeah.
So like, I don't know, that H R P would be similar to that?
Yeah, if we could put out an RFP, because everybody, it's just a proposal, not necessarily, I mean, there'll be a quote in there, but everybody kind of does it differently, you know, this, take this one, this would take this one.
Then you'd want the RFP, kind of the request, to consolidate units?
Yes. Or the most efficient way of doing that, and that if, necessarily, this one doesn't necessarily need air conditioning twenty-four seven, you know, or whatever. See what I'm saying? I mean, if your downstairs doesn't need, you're asking for a lot down there. Just to have those kind of things, somebody to look and see, you could do this, this or this, and maybe these guys can do it.
If you're looking at, you know, nine units, eleven thousand, a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, so I think...
Nine units, if we could cut down, you know...
It would pay for the RFP.
It might not, anyway, the building might be built and designed where you're not gonna be able to get that done. It's been four hundred dollars, you know.
We're not gonna take that negative cost for you.
I agree with you, it's like, more to reach out and do that, we're an RFP up for that.
Could we go back on this to do that? Do you think we'd be okay?
Well, like Ed said, I mean, we're nickel and diamond now, so, like I said, just our office, retention office, he's, he's been there a couple times last week. This whole month, he's been, he's been pretty much, since the last time we talked, the inmate one has been running good, but he's been in our office ever since, given that, uh, going.
Right now, you have one, so maybe if you could get this done and look at... Yeah, Becky, we're, are trying to look at, if we can hold out for a couple, two, three weeks, four weeks.
I would say hold out, but just in the back of your mind, just know that we may have to whichever events decide.
In air conditioning, it seems to be the bulk, it's more, when they start getting more out, more, they take more babysitting than the heating side. The heating side isn't near as complex as the air conditioning side, plus compression and everything, so...
Or...
Yeah, or, you know, it's a lot simpler, come near as complex as it is.
Well, maybe we can throw some stage or humid or something, or open the west.
There's that oil tape, you're talking about earlier.
Well, what works, works, I don't know.
Herbs.
Herbs, herbs, not herb, herb.
So Becky will send that out, so...
Well, no, I'll, I'll try to find it, then I'll get with Ed, and he can help me speak it, and then it'll have to come before the board. They'll have to look at it before it goes out to the public.
They probably had to rain it by now, two weeks for me to send out.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Anonymous.
Good for the day.
Please, Mommy, God.
Thank you, guys. All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, so at the last meeting, you guys had asked me to get hold of engineering associates to see if they would come, explain why you guys were needing to sign the flat refund form and see if you needed to pay. This is what I sent him. Good morning, Matt, board would like to have you come and explain the application, the city is requesting the chairman to allow. If you could attend the commissioner meeting on the second, that would be great. I can let you know what time I add you. If you cannot attend this meeting, does the sixteenth work better for you? Thank you. This was his response. Hi, Becky, I spoke with the city and they told me they did not need the chairman's signature after all. The plat was approved by the city planning and zoning board and is on its way to the city council meeting for final approval. So I believe we have everything we need unless the council asks for something else. If, if that likely, unlike, if that likely, unlikely scenario, I will get in touch if we do need a district review.
Can you check mark that one off?
So, just letting you know, forms do not have to be signed, no money needed.
MS district resolution.
So this is a proposed resolution.
Just one emailed out, Michael.
Yeah. Last Thursday.
I was wondering on the, the wherethis of the winding statute requires a board to appoint not less than three and more than nine. Should we put in there that we, should, if we're gonna look forward with this, should we establish a definite number instead of the three to nine? Should we make it, we say seven or five, four?
Uh, enough, can you guys say nine?
Well, I, I suggested seven, thinking that if I was to... Well, I, I suggested seven, thinking that if I was to get representatives from Upton, Newcastle, Osage, possibly rural, there'd be enough numbers there.
I remember we were bringing up seven, I just, we leave it to that three to nine.
Well, that would be more of a resolved portion, but I can make that change if you'd like.
I was thinking, well, if people drop off. Well, I'm thinking three to five, you know, it'd be harder to, to get representative from each community. Plus, if the three, you can get somebody gone, then you can't do anything really, and that's not enough to really get a good representation. Five is almost the same. Nine seems like a really large board, that you might have a lot more opinions than you need. It becomes more difficult.
Well, my see is, a lot of these boards, we have a tough time even filling five positions.
That's true, too.
You know, I, I, I'm sure we're not going to be able to speak just a board of three, if that's not enough, but it's tough finding five board members on a lot of boards.
Let's think about this for a second, may I, Mr. Chairman? What if you'd started with three, is it, can you build it to be bigger? Can you allow it to be bigger? Or you have to start at three and that's the end of it, forever?
I, I think what that would work is you could do whatever, and then, once that board is established, they can write their bylaws, they can change their bylaws to up it to five, or cut it from nine to seven. That would be up to that board, I think. Whereas if, like, this is just the initial one, we have to decide how many it's gonna be. Then it gets turned over to that board, and they basically write their bylaws, then they write their own bylaws.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's kinda where I'm at, this is not necessarily the board.
Yeah.
This is the board that is establishing whether or not there's interest in having the EMS. And so, what I'm thinking is that if, if you could get three, and three pretty ambitious people, um, to establish it, to get it to a vote for, um, the millipede, then, if that should pass, then those certainly could say, as a managing board, or a operating board, whatever the term is, to put it at five or seven.
And maybe we should leave it as three to nine, because we don't know how many people will be interested. Uh, what, what if we only get three people who are interested? And what if we get 20 people, and there's several of them that are very, very qualified to do it? Then we can perhaps decide at that point, do we have qualified people? And how many?
Along those thoughts, I think, Marty was saying, if you, if you have 10 people applying, probably a point nine. And they make that decision to eventually, they want their makeup of their board to look like.
See, I think that, leave it like this, and we get to applications, and I think that is our responsibility then to say, as, as we appoint them, it's like, we don't pick all of them from one of those geographic areas. Our responsibility as a board is to make sure that it's brought, that, once we appoint that board or across the, you know, for the best interest of that board. And then after that, it's, it's in the board, that board's hands.
Yeah, we dissolve ourselves.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, if, you know, if we get 30 applicants, then we put nine of you on the board. Pick out, you know, from different areas.
See, I like that positive talk so much better than the negative.
Of two applicants.
$400,000 first, really.
Well, maybe that's something we can convey to them is, there's nine of you, you guys now make that decision, and see that that's not a good bet, you vote that into a different role, and then try to weed out, I don't know how you tell somebody that's been appointed to a board that they're off now, but.
Because that's just what you do, you just put it in your, your bylaws that this one's gonna stay, and when the elections come back up, it's only gonna be fun.
I just, I have a question for my own, uh, thinking. So, if, if we decide to vote on this and we approve it, how much time do we have to go forward? Is it, we vote immediately towards advertising for board members?
Yeah, see, the, let me pull that statue back up to see, you know, how long the terms are gonna be. Yeah, three-year terms or staggered?
But I don't understand.
Yeah, we'll have to stagger them.
But when they don't all come up at the same time.
And if you were, if that board was going to dissolve two or three of them, then that would be the ones.
They would be, yeah, they would have to.
First one.
Yeah, your one years will be gone.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms, and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Did they can decide that, you know, after one year, we're going to cut down to a seven-member board?
So it's three-year terms, staggered, three years.
Does it most of them are?
I mean, certainly in, in, I think, like, I think you certainly in your advertising could say though, if we went to that, um, according to however many people applied, we would have two one-year terms, two two-year terms, three, three-year terms, or whatever.
Um, beyond the board's shoulders to approve the electors or the voters that, that it's necessary.
Correct.
In the county, and we, so we can start following for that.
Mm-hmm, and we got a lot of time.
Yeah.
Before any election, a long time.
A long time, I'm sure.
They could go May, I guess. Did they go in May?
Well, it'll go on the, no, next year.
Right, but May could be the first one, couldn't it? Can I ask, could it be a little bit of May?
Hmm, when you ever go on the general? That one, it won't have a special election for.
Yeah.
Not when I have another election in August, it'll go on the general.
And if you have a special election for, I don't know that.
I don't know, too, you.
No, you can't, it'll go on the general.
Yes, I think you have to be on the general, or general election.
Does anybody care?
All right, give it here.
That's exactly what that was.
I would make the motion to approve resolution 25-21, resolution by the Weston County Board of Transit Commission to form the Weston County Emergency Medical Services District under Statute, Wyoming Statute 18-12-105B and Wyoming Statute 18-12-111AXII.
I think there's two Xs.
One twelve, yeah.
Yeah, S I I.
Second.
Oh.
Discussion, even though we've discussed it.
Mr. Chairman, is this the, is this going to be the creation of the EMS or the necessity for it?
This would be the creation of the appointing board members to assess the need within the county. And then they themselves will be on their shoulders to prove to the.
That's not how it's written.
This is creating the EMS district.
District, yeah.
And then they will be kind of on the line for arguing that we need X amount of mills to, from the voters to pay for this.
There's some, there's some negative.
One thing I'll say is, I mean, at that one Newcastle meeting, I would venture two-thirds for, to one-third maybe against, and the last meeting I attended, it was unanimous to look into appointing the, or establishing a district, and at least get the ball rolling to see if it's something that we want, that county wants to.
I would also refer people to the, the couple, three videos now, I think.
Three, yes, three.
Three, right?
Yes.
Three videos to see what the public comment was, what, um, what the feelings were on it. And I would encourage people to go listen to those. I'd also encourage people to come and ask questions.
Yeah, there was some strange misconception that people, like, certain landowners might be paying a fortune, which isn't the case, it's only based off of their little acre that their house is on, it's not. If you've got 100,000 acres, you're not gonna be paying some exorbitant amount to get the other place.
You know, there's mostly positive feedback, I think everybody's receptive, at least, let's try to help ourselves, you know, and not get left out in the cold, not have an EMS district or EMS service, so.
None of those in favor of resolution 25, 2025-21, sorry? Creation of forming Weston County Emergency Medical Services District, under Statute 18-12-105B, under Statute 18-12-112AXII, encompassing entirety of Weston County. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Not to hit property taxes.
I think it'd be good if we had those postage staffers printed off and handed something we have readily available if people ask questions.
So, do you want to have that ready to advertise next week? Or wait until after the next week? Sure, Michael, is that everything ready, or do we just? Does it have to be a formal one?
I think you have to put out.
Yeah.
No, I mean, does he have to do it?
I think it's just, you know, the West County Commissioners was taking applications for.
You'll have to.
Just says it goes up to the point and it doesn't have a.
So, can I just add into the sheet that I advertised?
Yeah, I would just, um.
I doubt it.
Or do I need to do this one separate?
I'm, I'm a person that's separate, and here's why. Just to make it special with glitter and highlights and, you know, that this just isn't one of those that everybody passes by and goes, oh, they still need that, oh, they still need that.
I think it should be separate, because we're gonna have to do a whole process for this.
I quote Joe Biden.
Yes, I have one. And I'm speaking as Walter Sprague, not for the newsletter journal. Uh, and it has to do with this EMS district and the resolution, especially after the Upton meeting, I've heard from a couple people, and, um, the sentiment was basically, well, it'll never get done. I just wanna make a, a comment to commend you for how quickly this resolution was put together, and that you are getting this bold ruling, just to see if there is some public interest in it. I think it's important that people know about it, and I'm really grateful personally to see that it happened quickly, especially after the Upton meeting, I just think it's something people wanted to see. I'm very thankful that it's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mission found it. What else did I say, or you start?
No, you start, yes, you don't be so refreshing to hear from Matt, I'm.
Great news is I don't have much to share today, so.
That's it? I said, I waited for that.
I could add this, part of the reason I've asked to have Cali come in, build your engineering associates, is to look at this, um, um, these maps that we have in the county and try to get a handle of, you know, our maps that the county has aren't necessarily survey maps, they're maps. And try to get a handle of that bridge out there, and an explanation from her regarding her map, and, um, then maybe have an understanding of, does that easement actually exist? And from what I gathered to her, it does, to the rail or the gradaway, but I wanna hear it from the horse's mouth, I guess, and then figure out how we fix our maps in the county to, um, whether that's through another survey, I don't know if that's necessary, but, I mean, we paid for services to be done, for her to tell us that no survey is necessarily needed, because everything is there that exists, but how do we transpose that onto our county maps? For that confusion, so.
I got nothing.
Chair, you got anything?
I was excited to see the, the I's dotted and the T's crossed on Barton Road. It sounded like they have some plant dropping some gravel, so I think that was a pretty good timing.
Yeah. Chair?
Um, I would thank Judge Cossey for taking time to zoom with us, because I know he's a very, very busy man. And I just would encourage us as a group to, uh, go forward fairly quickly in talking and discussing our solutions with that, and then possibly communicating that to the public so there's no misunderstandings, because I think that's important, that people don't view it or, you know, from, from what they're hearsay, and have some misunderstandings about it. I think, in my opinion, it's, it's a good thing, um, we just need to put it together and, uh, to protect everybody, but to do it in a way that doesn't disrupt the court house business, it'd be amazing.
100% agree. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, coming back on evaluations, what did, what date did we decide on that one?
I don't know, um, and emails were sent to all, um, department heads, and I still do not have all of the, um, consent of interest forms, fast forward.
Okay, I would like.
Send out another one, and there may need to be a letter from the board. I have the filings that are not given.
Um, could we single them out and say, do you, do you, a couple of weeks, get them turned in?
I have no problem of us having a list and stating about this. Um, I'm gonna re-emphasize what we were told last time about evaluations and then having corrective actions, so that we are protected, as you saw, we do have vouchers that come through. So, um, I wanna, wanna emphasize. emphasize that a lot, I also wanna say that there was somewhat of a resolution concerning the dog attack, I understand, so, or the wild dogs, whatever.
Yeah, the, the dog attacks out, um, Hay and Hills, if you guys have ever had a chance to have a few minutes and look at those statutes, they're not good.
Right.
Or what my job or the sheriff's job is supposed to do, we made it something together the best we could, but we're still working on it, so.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to bring that up, that I understood that something was, the ball was rolling, on that, and I was appreciative of it, I think everybody is now, but, um, something to think about when you're talking to your legislators, or something about, what can we do? You know, I'm not always over, but when, if we have to write this thing for the courtroom to give legal authority, which seems so weird to me, for the sheriff to be able to do something, then we need to have legal, be able to give legal authority for the sheriff to be able to do something, in terms of that, or our county attorney, um, this seems so silly that common sense just ends up being a gas station in Custer, it just doesn't, it's ridiculous, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, we have an executive session, is Karen around? Let's see, the employment, uh, 6405AII. Motion for the segment to, someone in the executive session under 05AII employment. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?